Good evening. Just what we, last year, we had a full board resolution in bringing in kids escaping drugs. And I think that it was important that we have an update to see if the, how the partnership's going, how it's being received, and more importantly, to see the data if it's having an impact. So, Dr. Williams, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shuda. You know, this, this particular partnership really aligns to our goal number five, which is about establishing new partnerships as we see needed. And this is an organization that I'm pretty familiar with, and their whole premise is to help end the drug pandemic, which impacts so many of our students directly and indirectly. And, you know, the pieces that they focus on, and I wrote them down because they're really important, is early intervention, education, support, and they bring a certain expertise to the table that, you know, we've got student support staff that work in our school, but they don't necessarily have the expertise in this area that this group of folks do. So, I'm encouraged, you know, I know that legally there are laws now about, you know, marijuana for adults and all of that. But we also know that sometimes that can be a gateway drug into other things. And so, we discourage, we discourage our young people from getting involved with that. And if they are, in a supportive way, we want to, we want to be able to support them and their families. And this is an organization that I believe, you know, offers that. So, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Brown because I'm also very interested to hear about all of the things that have been going on with this organization. So, Dr. Brown?
Thank you, and good evening Superintendent Williams, Honorable Board Members, colleagues, and listening audience. Thank you so much for providing time during tonight's boardwork session for a brief update on kids escaping drugs. And it certainly my hope that there can be a more comprehensive presentation, including the team from Kids Escaping Drugs and other key stakeholders later this school year. Next slide, please. So, as Dr. Williams, she did an amazing job with providing some information regarding kids escaping drugs. And they have been in existence for over thirty years, serving so many in the Western New York community. And their dedication and passion to help individuals to live a drug-free lifestyle by offering prevention and intervention efforts when you meet with them. You just see the passion exuding from them. And they certainly live up to the mission that is right there on their website, and that is empowering adolescents and families to live a life free from the disease of addiction through community outreach, education, and early intervention. Next slide, please. And so, as Dr. Williams already stated, that Kids Escaping Drugs, it is certainly aligned to our, to Dr. Williams' five-by-twenty-five goals and the education bargain. And she already stated about goal number five, but it's also aligned to goals three and four. And so, the BPS partnership with Kids Escaping Drugs, it really prioritizes wellness. And that's so important that we focus on wellness at all areas. And also partners with parents, caregivers, and it also activates partnerships within the community. So, when we met with Kids Escaping Drugs, it was evident that they offered all of that, and we're excited to be partners with them. Next slide, please. And so, we are so excited that the Buffalo Board of Education passed the resolution to partner with Kids Escaping Drugs at the regular board meeting on February fifteenth, with the expectation of quarterly updates. And so, this is one of the updates this evening. And so, I just provided a very brief timeline, and they really hit the ground running. They really did. When you think about when they started in mid-February, they immediately had them to meet with our team, the Student Support Services team. They also met with Family and Community Engagement. They had a chance to present at the elementary and the secondary principals' meeting. It was well-received. They asked several questions, and they were excited and wanted to know when they could start. We knew we had to get the off, I'm sorry, the data-sharing agreement. And that was, that moved very quickly with the partnership with Office of School, I'm sorry, Office of Shared Accountability. And they also met with parent groups because we really wanted to make sure that our parent groups understood what the expectations were, what the look-for is, and they met with them, as well as Inter-High Student Council. We're continuously elevating student voice, and so many times we plan for students, but they know exactly what they need, and they were very vocal during that meeting, and it was really helpful to hear their perspective. Also, spring twenty-twenty-three to present, Kids Escaping Drugs, they began offering programming, beginning right in February, and there have been at least four thousand one hundred and forty-four participants in twenty-eight events in twenty-one locations. And you'll see those locations shortly in the next couple of slides, but very, very impressive. Next slide. So, I'm just going to briefly share with you three of the programs that they have already introduced to our BPS schools. They have several programs, but youth vaping, that is one of the programs that they have really focused on, and that is the program that many principals have reached out to them to support. Because their program that they offer in the presentations, due to the epidemic of vaping among teens, this dynamic and informative program speaks to middle and high school students. So, they cover topics such as cigarettes versus smoking and vaping, because there's certainly a myth out there that vaping is safe, and that is not true. And they shared with me, I met with them a couple of weeks ago, and one of the program specialists, she says she really enjoys working with Buffalo. She said the kids are engaging, they ask so many questions, because a lot of times they get their information from one another, and it's not always accurate. Also, the other program that they offer is for adult audiences only, is The Dark Side of Social Media. And they explain particularly to parents what to look for. There are so many ghost apps out there. I remember when they provided the presentation to our team, I was just shocked about how many apps are out there. And so, they really want parents to know, and adults to know what to look for to be able to support students. And then, the last one is the peer-to-peer. And that presentation involves young people who are in recovery, and they tell their story. And that's really tough, because it's as if they're reliving it, but they care so much about making sure that students have the education they need. I know in the CDC, it talks about how drug overdose, accidental drug overdose, it's certainly in that age group, oftentimes of eighteen to twenty-five. But there are so many individuals who say that they experienced drugs when they were very young. So, therefore, that education, that prevention is absolutely necessary. Next slide, please. So, here you just have a snapshot of the schools that they have already worked with, and they also have more on their schedule for this year. And again, they started in February, basically March for most of them. And they only had a few months prior to the end of the school year. They interfaced with winter break, spring break, and then the summer, they weren't, they weren't in the schools. And then, they started back hitting, starting back this September. And so, we see we have the elementary schools, we have high schools, we have grades five through twelfth grade. They also participated in some of the schools' wellness fairs. And they tabled there, they were able to provide a lot of information to the students and the families that were present during that time. As you can see, several presentations with youth vaping, also the, the peer group and the parent groups. So, they met with the parents in a lot of these schools. Next slide, please. And so, this is just a quick snapshot. Our program evaluator, Dr. Dominguez, she pulled some data from Infinite Campus just to get a snapshot of where we are as far as the district. And the blue you'll see is from September and October of twenty-twenty-two, and orange represents September and October of twenty-twenty-three. And as you can see, we're trending in the right direction for most of the categories, especially vaping and other inhalants. And the area where we are seeing a slight increase, which it's not a lot, but again, one is too many, is unauthorized sale or distribution or use or possession of cell of alcohol. And I really attribute a lot of this to all of the work that was done prior to the board resolution being completed. I know Dr. Williams and Honorable Board President Kotman and Honorable Board Member Shuda, they met with the team, we met with Kids Escaping Drugs, they explained everything. And then, they came to a boardwork session. And during that time, we notified all schools. So, they, we asked them if they were available to please tune in that evening, and we know that a lot of them did, as well as central office staff. And that presentation was amazing that Kids Escaping Drugs provided. And it really helped to get the information out, not only to the schools, but also the press release and the coverages, the coverage that we received. It helped to, to help parents to understand that they have to have look-for's, that they're there, and that there's additional support. And Kids Escaping Drugs, it fits nicely into, you know, our current infrastructure within the district, with our other partners and supports, and also the student support teams that are located in the building. Next slide, please. And just, these are just a few next steps. So, we're going to continue to support schools and implementation of the Code of Conduct. As you know, it has been revised, but there are a lot of prevention and intervention strategies right there within the Code of Conduct. The majority of the Code of Conduct speaks about the interventions and the supports. And even if it rises to a level three or four, which is, three is a short-term suspension, up to five days, a long term is five, more than five days of superintendent's suspension, we still expect for supports and interventions. The next step is to continue to meet with principals during the meetings to find out how they're doing. Also, the individual meetings, they consistently call the Office of People Personnel or members of the Student Support Team to talk through situations if they find out that a student is using drugs, and to talk about what type of interventions and supports are available. People Personnel, they also have a resource sheet for families when they leave. And Kids Escaping Drugs is one of the resources that we have listed there. Also, to identify a committee to further explore alternatives to suspensions or reducing the number of days. We met with Kids Escaping Drugs, and they provided us with what they're doing in other districts, and we're excited about that, to be able to propose a plan to see how we can create that program, a diversion program, or reducing the number of days of suspension through participating in a program like Kids Escaping Drugs. Also, the program evaluator in the Division of Student Support Services, Dr. Dominguez, with other Student Support Service team members, they're going to be working more closely with Kids Escaping Drugs and visiting with them to the various sites and looking at the data of the schools to make sure that how can we continuously support a school if we're seeing a rise in office discipline referrals as it relates to drugs or drug use? And finally, scheduling a follow-up meeting with Inter-High Student Council. Again, Student Council, they have a lot of great agenda items for this year, but this is another area that we really want to focus on and make sure that we have that student voice there, that they are ambassadors for this important work, because we want to make sure that we're, we are educating the students so they understand the dangers and the impacts, and the impact of engaging and using drugs. And again, I just want to thank Dr. Williams for just creating this space for this meaningful work. And I don't know, I think I forgot to mention that this is free of charge, and it's amazing how much they do, and there's no cost associated with it, so we appreciate that. Next slide. And the next slide is just, thank you so much, and this again is a very brief update. And so, now I am open to questions and feedback.
Shuda?
Yes, I, I'd like to know, you're getting a good feedback from the schools? You know, the people, that's what I'm hearing, that people, you know, schools are excited, and they like the partnership. And so, this is, this is great news. I, I like the data, I like the amount of kids that they've served. So, I think that this was really beneficial. So, kudos to your staff, kudos to our friends at Kids Escaping Drugs. And I, I think it was the vision that we all had, to help kids and to help families.
Thank you, and I appreciate your support with this.
Anyone else?
Mr. Hurd is in the boardroom, Chairperson Shuda.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Wonderful program, wonderful start, and, and it served the most, most important need in this community. And I have a question, where it says that there have been at least four thousand one hundred and forty-four participants in this program at twenty-one locations since spring of two thousand twenty-three. Identifying that, that four thousand one hundred people, are those kids, parents? How many children are we having in the program, or how many families are working within this program at this time?
Yeah, so that number is inclusive of parents, students, and I can get that breakdown as far as how many students versus parents.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It was their whole, it was their whole student body in those specific grade levels, so I can check to find out exactly how many.
Are we identifying those students of need?
I'm sorry?
Are we identifying those as students of need that, that's, that need the program? That's been, you know, might have been subjected to drug usage?
Yeah, so what they did is they identified those grade levels that they felt that students really needed to hear. It's more of a preventative type of presentation, because they said there's, the kids are so engaged. And they said, I find, she said, I find Buffalo, I shouldn't say this on a public meeting, but Buffalo Public Schools to be, I'll say, one of the best districts that she works with, because the kids are asking so many questions, which tells us that they're getting misinformation. And so, that's how we want to tackle this, with the prevention and then intervention for those who are using. And when you talk to Kids Escaping Drugs, they talk to parents about, how do you know when your kid, when your child is getting to that point that they're abusing drugs? It's when they want to stop and they can't. So, they give a lot of great information.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Evans-Brown? Do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Chair Shuda. Dr. Brown, kudos to you and your team, as always. I always liked Kids Escaping Drugs, and I was, you know, quite surprised being on this board that we did not have a formal relationship with them, so thank you for that. I think you showed a list of schools who are, who have participated, and I'm sure it's open to all the schools in the district. But I like the fact that it's, the program has involved a number of other schools, and you can't give kids too much information about vaping, about, you know, these other drug-related things, because they do, they, they hear from social media, they get the wrong information. And at least here, they're getting the current valid information from people who are experts in this field. And as you know, we have had tragedies in our district with our children vaping and dying. So, it's real, and so, I don't think it's necessarily an isolated situation. I think all schools from fifth and up should get the information, so kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Board Member Shuda, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to you for bringing this program forward. Certainly, they have been, had been trying to get into the district for a long time and was never allowed. So, thank you for, you know, forming that bridge for us. I, I like the presentation. It hit everything that, my questions were out answered. The only thing, Dr. Brown, that I would like to see or have conversation of, there are two things, that we, we start identifying children based on patterns and habits that are going in the wrong direction and start steering them into this program. I think that oftentimes, we're reactionary instead of being proactive. And we can tell the kid is coming to school high or whatever, or the kid is missing days, and you know he's on substance abuse or something. I'd like to see when you start under your blue step, when you start identifying a committee to explore alternatives to suspension and reduce the number of suspended days with interventions, interventions, and supports. We talked about that before. But I'd also like to see where parents are encouraged to get involved with their child. They may, you know, they're the ones that understand this, so I'd like to make sure that piece is added into what you're doing. And I'd like to do it proactively if we can for those group of students. The other question I have is how are the principals encouraged to participate? Okay, I mean, we have twenty-one schools here, we have many more, that's approximately a third of our schools. How are the ASLs, how are they being encouraged to participate? You said something about the data, the data is driving this. I'm curious to know, you understand what I'm saying? Are the schools with the highest needs taking advantage of this? Because as I look on this list, I don't necessarily know if that's, that's quite true. So, that's my other question. How are the principals being held accountable or the staff being held accountable to make sure that the schools that are in most needs, not that these are not, because all of this is important, are also participating in this, is what I'm thinking and saying.
Yes, so I know we have a principals' meeting that's, I believe it's next week, we're going to remind them. And one of the next steps that I indicated is to involve the, our program evaluator. So, she's going to work very closely with Kids Escaping Drugs as well. And we are going to specifically reach out to principals and try to coordinate a time for them to come out to do a presentation and to do, to offer that additional support as well, because we know that's critical. I know their, their schedule is filling up, so there is an ongoing list. So, there are a number of schools that they haven't had a chance to meet with yet, but they're scheduled. But I'll get a more exhaustive list. But yes, we want to keep this at the forefront with the principals. And we also want to share updates with the principals as well, just as I've done here with the board. I want to be able to share this with principals and talk about the benefits, but drill down to the student, which I couldn't get to that in this public presentation, but that's the key piece of it. I'm sorry, did I, did you have a second question? Did I answer your both of them?
No, no, you pretty much answered it, and I was talking about the proactive piece, about identifying children who are, you know, and, and parents, and allowing parents to have a way. Are we using our parents' liaisons at all for this? Have they been trained on this, or will they be trained on this?
I like that idea. We will make that happen. I will talk to Dr. Reynolds and see how we can arrange that. I love that idea.
And, and so, what I would like to see, and I'm big on clubs, anybody knows me, know I'm big on clubs. What I would like to see is that when a child participates in one of these training sessions, if they could have a sticker or a, some sort of a pin or something that says, you know, I don't know what you would call it or something, but maybe a campaign around, say, no to drugs. Remember those campaigns back in the day or, or whatever? Just a campaign that's sort of like, kids can wear their pin or whatever, and other kids can talk to them or whatever. I'm big on, on making sure that we have clubs and campaigns, because I think children are, can be their own ambassadors, really, by helping each other get through some things. But I really would like to see that parent piece where parents can reach out and say, I need help with my child, before the child gets out of control or something. I'd like to see that added in that, but excellent, excellent presentation. And I'm very pleased to see that we're off and running with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think then we'll close up this section. We have another, thanks again, Dr. Brown. Superintendent, would you like to say anything before we go to the next?
Sure, just to close out, I agree. I think it's a great partnership. It's been a long time coming. We know that children's brains are developing until the age of twenty-five. We also all know that, you know, things like vaping and hookah, you know, where they, they give, you know, they're in vibrant colors, and they, they, you know, make all of these exciting, you know, names for them, bubblegum pink and all this stuff. You know, it entices our children to want to use them. And yet, these are, you know, these are things that cause COPD, lung issues, asthma, and even cancer. And so, you know, I'm really encouraged, and I think, you know, the next step will be really working with our parents so that they can identify also and know that, you know, these things are sold sometimes just in corner stores. You know, it's easy to access them, it's very easy to get them. And the kids think they're sexy and cute, and, you know, they don't fully realize all of the harm that can be done through them. So, I think this is a long time coming, and I'm excited to see where this partnership will continue to grow to.
Okay, great, thanks. The second part today, well, I guess it's the second part that has two different things we're going to discuss. For me, a lot of my constituent calls and a lot of the talk in the community are about two things. The, the conditions of a building and how that impacts the culture of the school, which then, you know, is tied to school attendance and which leads to student achievement. We also have gotten calls like regarding transportation. Is what we did, giving the children with the three-bell schedule, are we getting more time on task in the classroom with instruction through this new schedule? So, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Hills and have a little overview of where we are. All right.
So, the bulk of tonight, one, if I can have a thumbs up, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Chairperson Shuda. The bulk of tonight will be on facility conditions with basically one slide on the overview. But I wanted to touch briefly on where we're at. Admiral, next slide. So, I think with our facility conditions, renewed relationships with our families and students, strong community schools, innovative high schools, and servicing our neediest children and families are part of this. Next slide, Admiral. And really, number one, eliminating opportunity achievement gaps, priorities, prioritizing safety, security, and wellness, and activating partnerships, and also getting all voices to the table, all critical elements of our facilities. Next slide. So, today I'm going to talk about our enrollment levels and some of our capacity. Building conditions survey, which was completed in- Building conditions survey, which was completed in the middle of the spring. It was started in 2022, but it was filed with the state in April. And our facility status, building repair, safety and security systems. And then I'm going to have one slide on transportation update. Next slide. So enrollment capacity, next slide. So we just ran the numbers of enrollment for 2023. We are looking at an October snapshot, which lines up with when we do beds, but it's not the beds numbers, because the beds numbers are used for the state formula aid, foundation aid calculation. The beds numbers will be slightly different. We took a snapshot of every year from 2013, October, February, and then May to see where we were at with schools. We noticed over those 10 years, very slight variations in these wide bands. Occasionally, school to school, you may see shifts. We do have some schools that from October till the end of the year, they do see some increases. We have some schools that see losses from October to the end of the year. But when we look at the overall population, it really comes out in the wash that what we have in our schools in October is very similar to what we have in May. We broke, for the facilities, we broke this up into bands of preschool, pre-K, and kindergarten, elementary one to four, middle level five to eight, high school nine to 12. Our students in our ungraded programs that are mostly alternate assessment students, are student more in community-based, and then that's our total. If you see from 2013, we have 3,095 less students. We have since 2013 seen a slight gain in our high school students. That was mostly by, in the 2016, 2017 year. But we have lost students in those 10 years. A significant number of students, I do need to note, our preschool and our pre-K students, and the preschool are basically the programs at Bennett Park Montessori. It's not including rural scholars. Those programs are not aidable programs as far as building aid goes. So when they calculate building aid, it's really our student population K to 12 that they use for building aid calculations. Those students were not able to submit to the state for a building aid calculation. Next slide. When you see where we've lost students, it's really in our first through fourth grade or our fifth through eighth grade years. You see our preschool, we did take a dip during the pandemic years, but it's kind of evened out, but it's still on a bit of a slide. In the aggregate, we've lost a tremendous number of students. There has not been a corresponding increase of that number in charter school enrollment. There has not been any district that has gone up in our surrounding area to account for those 3,000 students. It's most likely it's a graying population. It's families that have left the Buffalo area completely that are being accounted for in that loss of students. Next slide, please. Buffalo did see a population increase, biggest in the state by urban areas. But again, we're not, we're seeing that population increase isn't necessarily resulting in the demographic that we serve in our schools. Next slide, please. So we have a building condition survey that's conducted every five years. The last one was conducted in 2015, because during the pandemic, the state went to a rotation where instead of everyone doing it every five years, schools were divided up so that each year about a fifth of the schools did their survey. So our survey year was 2022. So we conducted a comprehensive survey of every single one of our sites in 2022. And we compiled the results. If you looked at it on paper, it's about 90 binders. It takes up a whole cart, two levels, to cart it around. It's a massive amount of documentation. Next slide, please. So the nuts and bolts of it are that it breaks up, what would you need to do to remedy basic issues, basic operational issues in your buildings over the next five years? If we did everything this year, it would be $308 million worth of work. When we go to year five, it totals up to $360 million of work with normal escalations built in. This does not include upgrades to support programming or athletics. So if we say we want a new lab to support an innovative program, or we want to make upgrades to fields, or we want a new pre-K or preschool classroom, those are not included because they are not necessarily aidable. But we did do a condition survey of Johnny V Wiley, of Riverside Stadium, and of All High. Approximately $98 million of this needed work is in 19 facilities that are not eligible for building aid. So facility aid is based on a K to 12 population. We have either abandoned buildings, athletic facilities, other sites that are not eligible for building aid. So any money we put into them would have to come from another source. If you do want to see the whole package of building condition surveys across the state for 2022, there is a webpage for building condition surveys. On that webpage, you can download the zip file and look at all the building conditions that were taken in New York State submitted in 2023 for 2022. Next slide. So these are the items that wound up being high cost. Our largest condition survey issue is roofing. Our roofs from joint schools reconstruction are mostly are all out of warranty. There were a couple of new roofs we put on after that. But those roofs are now reaching the point where they're at end of service. So roofing is a large part of it. And as everyone knows, a compromised roof can lead to serious instructional issues. So we are gradually working on roofs, but it takes an entire summer week to do two or three buildings. So to get to the number of roofs we need to get to is a massive undertaking. Interior elements, finishes, compromised paint, plastering, woodwork deteriorating. Those is 57 million. Our HVAC systems, our heating systems, our boilers, our air return and in schools with air conditioning, our air conditioning systems, we're looking at $54 million envelope elements. If you've ever been in a school and you see where the plaster is puffing out on the walls, looks like a white fire where it's just coming up, that's usually in one of our buildings that has deteriorating envelope. Water is getting in through the mortar. And very often, that's happening on our windward side of buildings. So School 19, School 3, School 195, their, School 82 has significant issues there too. A lot of our schools have significant issues where water is getting in through the walls and work would need to be done there. Electrical upgrades, about 19 million for electrical upgrades. And that is, you know, some buildings have more challenges than others. Some buildings did not get their electrical systems upgraded during joint school construction. So Hutch Tech is an example of that. Their electrical system was not upgraded during joint schools reconstruction. So we've been doing thermal imaging using infrared cameras to see what kind of heat is being produced by our electrical systems. And we're seeing some real issues there, and that was done after the building condition survey. But it shows where electrical system is not efficient. Site elements, just the various elements around the site, deteriorating steps, deteriorating doors, elements like that. Plumbing, $11 million. Emergency systems, which is our sprinklers, our fire alarms. It's not necessarily our security and safety systems. New York State, in their planning manual and in their building condition survey, does not have school security as one of their systems they look at. And then special construction is things that were obviously need to be done, but they didn't necessarily fall into any category. Next slide. So, oh. Next slide, please. So looking at the schools with the top 20 totals for the building condition survey, School 8, which we did put $10 million into to get it up to status. Now, some of that was not addressing things in the building condition survey. So that was a 15 and a half million dollar of need. Buffalo Academy of Visual Performing Arts is over $10 million of need. South Park High School, over $9 million of need. Riverside Academy High School, over $8 million, $8.8 million of need. Lydia T. Wright was not done under joint schools construction. It was done just before joint school construction. There's about $8,700,000. South Side Elementary, significantly. You can all read Hutch Tech. About a third of that is electrical work. 131 and 86, that was 8 million and a half. We put about 3.5 million into it. But when we look at things that still need to be done, there is the work that needs to be done there. McKinley High School, significant amount of work needs to be done. School 90, teeny little school with a teeny amount of rooms. It needs about $6.6 million worth of work. So that's where we're at with these schools. You can look down the list. Next slide, please. These are the Buffalo condition surveys for sites that are currently not reimbursable. Now, for the work we did at 86 and at 8, that work, because it was emergency work, was not reimbursable. But we can, for future work, apply for state reimbursement now that we have students in those schools. This building condition survey for 333 Clinton Street would be $27 million just to make that building safe. We did a feasibility study recently. In order to put a school program in there, we're looking at about $120 million worth of work. The Service Center Warehouse, $11 million. That's on the 10545 Bailey. School 171, the current, it's not the academy school anymore, but was last time we had it. It's a vacant school on Floss Street. That's $8 million worth of work for that school. City Hall, the areas we occupy, $6 million would be needed to bring those up to an acceptable standard. School 28, $6 million for that home to bring it to an acceptable standard. That's not for students. That's just for safe and appropriate operations. School 4 is about $4 million to bring it up to standard. School 4 has significant HVAC challenges. The commissary, the existing site, needs about $4 million worth of work at 1055. 46A, the Adult Learning Center, has two sites. 46A, which is not a building aid reimbursable site, needs $3 million worth of work. The Service Center where the trades are needs $3 million worth of work. 46, the rented, or no, 46, the main location, 46A is the lead location. The main location needs about $3 million of work. And again, none of those are reimbursable sites. Next slide, please. We have recent emergency capital projects. You hear CFO Barnes talking about these. The move from Research Lab to School 42 at Tri-Maine, which is what the state most of Tri-Maine site as is School 42. That's the school building code. It's also our school code. The relocation of 131 Academy School to School 86 and to relocate to 12 Leonardo da Vinci to School 8. Those were all emergency measures. Some used our BESR funding, others used general fund. The work at 366 Research Lab, a lot of that was done by our trades to make that work. Those are all, were all unreimbursable, either because the location isn't a reimbursable location or because of the emergency nature of the work. We had to invoke emergency status to avoid procurement regulations. So in order to do that emergency, we are urgency stricken for those projects, because we have to justify, was it really an emergency? Next slide, please. Pending large capital projects, the Buffalo Child Nutrition Services Cool Chill Commissary, which has partial reimbursement in the Child Nutrition Fund ballot, but it also will require some general fund support. DaVinci at Buffalo Hall on the Buffalo State Campus, it is eligible for NICE facility aid. And Phase 3 for All High is not eligible for aid, but is allocated right now in the general fund. And right now, the state is reviewing those construction documents. Next slide. We have some critical questions we're facing, and these may be new to some of you. Do we have an elementary enrollment that justifies our current portfolio of elementary schools? That is the question that state facilities, NICE facilities ask us. Are we, are we using our facilities efficiently? Are there high school programs that are not viable or can be consolidated? How do we stage swing locations for the work that needs to be done? When we're looking at $310 million worth of work, some of that work we cannot have the building occupied when the work is being done. And it's not just going to be done over the summer. So we need to identify swing locations, which we currently do not have. Hence, we were in a bind with DaVinci because we don't have swing locations. What is our strategy for central offices and storage? Currently, we are using classroom space that was reconstructed with state aid for student occupancy, and we are using that for central office. We have also central office in several locations that are not at a condition level we want them to be and are not aidable facilities. And the same with storage. We need to get a storage solution that does not involve 333 Clinton Street, the old performing arts, because it is not adequate. The only thing it has is the fact that it's semi-transportable. How do we fund investment in athletics facilities? Our athletic facilities have been under-invested in since reconstruction. And how do we, if they're not eligible for state aid under the maximum cost allowance calculation based on K to 12 usage of classroom space? How do we fund investments in our athletic facilities? Do we turn any of our unrenovated schools over to the city? If not, how do we manage them? We can mothball them so they are more cost efficient, because right now our utilities costs, some of those unrenovated schools are very excessive because we have to keep them heated, we have to keep them in adequate condition, or they'll deteriorate quickly. And then how do we deploy capital assets for CTE and adult ed programming? We currently have a lot of redundancy in adult ed programming and CTE. And we use our existing CTE program spaces that have been built with reimbursable funds. They are eligible for reimbursement by the state for adult ed, which is not eligible for building aid from New York State. Those are critical questions we have facing us. And we have formed a committee that's been working on that since last January, that we've spun off two subcommittees of the Capital Improvement Committee, one for athletics and one for building usage. one for athletics and one for building usage. So, those committees are looking at those questions more deeply to come back with some solid data, some solid recommendations. Next slide, please. Facility use. Next slide. So, we've made building safety upgrades. We posted this sign that you see was developed based on the Vista Report and based on some feedback from building administrators. So, we ordered those last year. They've been put up at schools. We also have the no weapon zones sign. There are two of each at each school. We had to replace the entire key card access system controls and the software, and that was paid for with SmartBonds. It's not a building aid project. In fact, it's not eligible for building aid unless it's tied to a larger project. But the SmartBonds is the IT department's funding that we were able to use. SmartBonds has its limitation, one being that you have to tell them several years in advance what parts you're ordering. And the change orders for SmartBonds are very difficult. So, we had to replace the entire key card access system, the controls in each building, the software, the network behind it. The whole thing had to be replaced, and it takes about three to four weeks at each school. We've been working on that since two summers ago. We replaced all the intercom systems because those were failing. Every office has a panic alarm button installed that is tied into the new system. We replaced all the intrusion detection systems. We will have that work done by December. We are all, have also began to upgrade using SmartBonds. All 5,009 cameras with upgraded hardware, network upgrades, improved software, because higher resolution cameras require a higher bandwidth. We had to invest in servers, we had to invest in switches, and then improve software to manage that. We began that in 2021. It will continue to late 2024. So, we are, we are continuing to upgrade every camera in the district to higher resolution, and those cameras were failing that we had. So, the new cameras all have to be bundled and programmed and installed, and they are sophisticated pieces of electronic equipment. And then we are investigating using the new intrusion system and the camera system to implement a door prop alarm system. So, if any door is propped, the, it would signal in the main office which door is propped. It would also, the nearest camera would zoom to it. We have, we have worked with, that was a part of the original vendor, so we've done a couple change orders. We've had three vendors do some demos of the software we can layer on our system to accomplish that and to develop a licensing offer. So, we are working on including that in our existing SmartBond project. We're looking to demo in the next couple of weeks or month a couple of schools to test, see how it works in those schools. We've had School 30 running on a couple different examples to see how it works. It's a complicated system, but when it's in place, and it will be, it will be something we do with this round. When it's in place, if a door is propped open, there will be in, in the main office, it will come up on the monitor, and whatever the closest camera will be, will zoom to it. So, and then we also implemented 65 walkthrough concealed valve weapons detection systems. That was funded through our Besser, and then additional signage, which you see on the side. And it was a surprise to me that we had multiple sites that did not have Knox Box access. So, we are now at 100% of our sites have the Knox Box. We had about six sites that did not have it at the beginning of last year. So, now 100% of our sites have Knox Box, which is the box right by the main door. Then if the fire department comes up, they're, they're able, there's, they have a key, and it has all the keys to the building. Next slide, please. So, there was legislation, and the governor just signed it two weeks ago, the Safe School by Design Act. It is going to have funding for safe school improvements. It is also going to add to the building condition survey a school safety category. Some of the things we need to look at are access control, double portal, and possible vestibules. So, a way to have a double secured entry for entry to our schools. Some of our schools, it's going to be very difficult because of historical considerations. Exterior blue warning lights for safety postures. So, if a school is in lockout or lockdown, there'll be exterior lights that will indicate that. Door hardening, our classroom lock kits in the new MPS S106 manual are now allowed to have keyed interior and exterior corridor locks. So, we have in a lot of our classrooms, and we, when we replace a lock kit, now we can put in, but lock kits are around $400 to $500 apiece. So, it would be amassed with capital investment. In reconstruction, the decision was made that most classrooms have a keyed lock on the outside and only have a handle on the inside. So, the door has to be locked from the outside in order to secure the room. So, and that, according to fire code, we can't just have a deadbolt. It has to be in the lock kit. But there are lock kits that were approved in the NICE ed memo in 2022 that allows for interior locking. So, that is, but again, to change out every lock kit in the district is an expensive proposition. An exterior window hardening, ballistic glazing film rated, under regular laboratory 752, which is shatter resistant and high caliber ballistic resistant. It doesn't necessarily block the bullet in its path, but what it does is if there is a ballistic event, it prevents the window from, from spittering and blowing out. So, that if you, the Kentucky school shooting at the private Lutheran school, she shot through the door windows in order to get into the school. So, there's been a lot of investment, investigation of ballistic glazing film. Those are all things that, none of that is cheap. Ballistic film is coming down slightly, but it is very expensive, and there are very difficult considerations because we have to make sure that it doesn't create a thermal barrier that causes our windows to crack. And, but those are the things we need to look at next. Any major capital improvement project we do, those elements will be brought into it. And if we do a joint schools construction project, those will be the parts that are hardwired into it. Next slide. I wanted to briefly go over work orders. We have gone from 7,000 work orders a year up to about 8,900 work orders a year. You'll notice there was a slight in January after the historic lizard, but we are continuing at a high level of work orders. Our tradespeople have, have done a lot of our reconstruction at schools we've had to relocate to. They have been responsible for keeping up with a lot of the work that has to be done. The Royal Scholar has been all tradespeople that have done that. So, there's, there's a lot of work. Our uncompleted rate was down to 12.97. It's now at 17.67, but it's significantly down from where it was in 2021. These are the areas we get work orders in, total of 8,906, as you see up there. Currently, those are the work orders that have come in from 11/122 to 11/123. Just to give people a sense of the work that is going on, depending on the level of sophistication, some of these are, can be multi-week projects to get them done. Next slide. Before I do my slide on a brief, very brief transportation update, are there any questions on this, or the presentation?
Jen, you'd like, you have your hand out?
I do, and this was very comprehensible. I understood everything. Thank you very much. It's a lot, it's a lot. I do have a question. When you were talking about the, the projects that are non-reimbursable, the city hall piece, are we not in a city building? All the, that $6 million, wouldn't that be anything that we would need as far as like physically? Wouldn't that be something required of the city because we're in their building? Or is that our particular, are we owners of that space? Like, I'm, I just want to know, like, how, how are we fully responsible for physical, you know, work being done in a building that is city, I'm assuming is city-owned?
So, it's our people using the facility. So, we don't have necessarily a written agreement, but the handoff of responsibility is if we're occupying it and abatement needs to be done, painting needs to be done, glazing needs to be done, plumbing needs to be done, that is restricted to that area. Floor tile remover needs to be done, carpeting needs to be done, doors need to be done, locks need to be done. All of that is our responsibility.
I'm really, I'm, I just have to state that I can see if we want to like put some carpeting in or beautify the place, but to like paint in a basement in a building that is occupied by multiple gr, I, I just don't know. As a, as someone who actually rents, I wouldn't, you know, if I needed abatement done, it would be on the responsibility of the landlord, not me to have to take care of that. If I want to put carpeting in, I see that being a beautification thing, something I would like to do. So, that $6 million figure kind of threw me off. Maybe I'm twisted about the whole city money thing, but yeah. I, I get what you're saying, but I'm still, it doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, Board Member McCossey. I think it's, we look at it as free space, but it's not really free space.
In boardroom, Mr. Hurd.
Yes, a couple of quick questions. One thing that wasn't on here, and I'd just like to, your reflection, I may enjoy it. What's the condition of that, and that's the rentable, or are we still?
We will be meeting this week. We've had meetings this week and next week. I would be ready to give a more accurate picture next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. And also, the alarms and, and the safety categories that's going to be, has been voted on by the state. Will we be reimbursing those things that we do in our building that, that we use our funds for now, or, or how is that going to take place?
The governor just signed the legislation, and the only grant that I've seen so far, and I've been looking pretty frequently, is for non-public schools to do safety upgrades because that was part of it. But I'm expecting that there'll be a similar, probably some kind of formula-based funding source. It might be wrapped up under the safe funding sources. It might be wrapped up under separate, we're still waiting. It was just signed two weeks ago.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I thank you for taking the time to compile all of this data and keep us such accurate records. It's really, you know, important that we move forward, but I'll just thank you because it's a lot of work to, for the slide that you gave us to compile this information and how we can use it in that district. So, thank you again.
I have a question, Terry Shuda. I have a question for Chief Hill. So, if you had a $9 million windfall, where would you use, what would you do with it? I'm referencing the money that's currently being held by the city for the interest that they owe on our, that's our money. That is a windfall for the city. Where would you directly put that money if you could have $9 million today?
Safety and security.
Safety and security. So, we need to use $9 million for safety and security. Thank you for your answer.
That would just be a start, but that's where, where we really want to, you know, we, we have fire systems that were, based on the number of fires that happen in schools every year. We are prepared for fires. We're not, as a design and a facility, I'll have been prepared for the 21st century reality. And so, safety and security, that would be a start.
Thank you, Chief Hill.
Okay, is that it?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, the money that we are using to maintain these buildings, these buildings that we, that we, the city owns them, we're not using them. How much, can we compile a list of how much money we are spending? One, to maintain their buildings. Two, the money we put into upgrading their buildings and use that to say to the city, they gave us a list of things they're doing for us, but I want to show them that we spent all this money in their buildings, then they go and sell them, they don't give us any money back. It's not a reciprocal relationship. It is time to quantify this major expense to Buffalo Public Schools that we are maintaining their buildings, spending on, spending on their buildings, and they're not recognizing any of that. It's, we need to start quantifying that. There's no reason for us to be fixing up, painting, doing capital repairs to their building and cooping nothing. If they sell it, we should get something back, and they should recognize that they're using our money. And it's also going to have to be part of, that they need to obey the law and give us our interests. That's, that's one of the things I noticed, but I, I had a question on your first slide because it kind of shook me for a minute. You had a slide on the, the student population and the enrollment, which is what they're going to use to decide whether we get financing and aid. And your, your numbers for 2023, I added them up, and it adds up to 29,892 students.
Which is, which they're going to use to decide whether we have financing and aid.
I'm sorry, someone needs to mute.
So, because I'm, let me, let me look at that slide.
Yeah, can you bring that slide up, please? Because you're showing a drop of 3,095, that's what it says there. When I add that column up, if you use those numbers, we get another 1,021 students that are lost. So, I was trying to reconcile that. Can you look at that?
So, so that three, that gap is from 2013 to 2023.
The numbers for 2023 add up to 29,892, and that's 1,021 more students. So, are we really, are we really down currently 4,116 students?
Let me, let me look at the original spreadsheet here. I apologize because I just got the numbers on Monday, Monday morning.
I'm referencing the column 2023. And, and you're showing is dropping in the first column, PK 4,089. It drops down to 3983. Then you show the second category, elementary, 8,701, and it drops down to 8,133. I'm looking at all this.
It should be 29,892 with a loss of 4,115.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking at. We actually are showing 4,116 slots. That, that, that number is understated.
I was doing a pivot table, and the pivot table was copied from 2022, and I plugged into the 2023 numbers. But it's really, since 2013, we are down 4,115.
That's going to cause us a problem, isn't it?
That's for what would be. That's for what would be building aidable. It's also going to cause us a problem for foundation aid. So it's going to hit us in many different directions.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that, that the problem seems to be a little more serious than this, this suggested. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Chair Shuda?
No, I think.
One slide.
Okay, transportation.
Admiral, there's one last slide if you could put it up. So with the implementation of the three-tiered bell schedule, we have seen a significant improvement in uncovered routes in the morning. There have only been two days this year where one day where we had two uncovered morning routes and one day where we had four. We've had a COVID outbreak that impacted one of our terminals. We've had a lot of morning issues. We have not seen as much as I would like to see for PM, but we have still been able to get schools. We've been tracking through the service reports. We're looking at KPIs for delays. I'm still working on calculating October, but it looks like we were able to reduce from September to October about 45% of the delay time. So I'm hoping we're able to get that down more. The full hour, six hour, 55 minute day. We've made a lot of adjustments to getting buses there on time at the beginning of the day. Where we're struggling is the end of the day still. But we've had a dramatic reduction in uncovered routes. No uncovered AM routes on any day except for two days. Again, it was, was a minimal amount. Fewer delayed routes from September to October. Consistent times should pick up and drop off. We do occasionally get reports of students that are late. When we track that back, we're usually able to identify an inefficiency in one of the tiers that we're able to eliminate. But it really helps. We've had some schools that every.
Upset Mr. Hills. We take a look at your chart as you read off to it. Are the years backwards?
Oh, yeah, they are backwards. Yes, they are backwards. 2023 should be first. Oh, my goodness. So next time, Board Member Woods and Board Member Hurd, I'll have you proofread for me. 2023 is the first column, 2022 is the second column. I apologize. So we had consistent times for pickup and drop off. And again, we're, schools are notifying us when there's a consistent problem. Parents are contacting us. We're trying to go to try and get to the cause. But in general, we're doing better each week. ELT transportation for the first time since before the pandemic was fully implemented. That's a huge lift. We are able to do ELT transportation. Owning a car is not a requirement for having a student at after-school programming anymore. And we're at about 79% of the buses with bus stations. We're hoping to get that up closer to 100 as the year goes on. That's just a brief. And we will continue to find efficiencies. Right now, we're still removing some or not returning. We will get some savings. We're on the books that we had to route but have not returned to school.
Does anyone have any questions?
In the boardroom, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Shuda, Chairwoman Shuda. Chief Hills, could you please correct the slide and send that to us? I think that's an important visual for us to have and to be able to share with constituents. There, there, to my knowledge, we are still letting out some schools early in order to accommodate the last bus run, to get the last buses there earlier. So I know that that is happening in some schools still. And overall complaints from parents have gone down for me personally. I am hearing those still issues at just certain schools, especially with buses coming late in the afternoon for pickup in that, for that last pickup. And with people saying that it's even later than last year. And then when we saw Chief Barnes's update last week and there's, I think it was well over a million dollar unbudgeted cost to pay for overtime, that also seemed to alarm me that are we really doing better overall in the afternoon when we're now taking on an extra cost? And I'm just, again, hearing from certain schools that the buses are even later this year than last year.
So we're, we're troubleshooting those schools. Those principals do send us a list and I'm visiting schools to see where the hotspots are and try and eliminate that. The amount of overtime we spend on any given day for administrators and teacher assistants that are staying is miniscule in the amount compared to the amount of overtime for ELT programming. That's not driving overtime.
Do we know if the overtime that we're paying this year is higher than last year?
It's lower this year than last year.
It is, okay.
And it's significantly lower than two years ago.
Thank you, Chief Hills.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Shuda? Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank you. Quick question about the program that we introduced in the last year about the parents transferring their children to school. Has, how has that affected the transportation now? And how is that going for us?
We are not doing it this year. Last year, it made, it didn't make, it saved, it didn't save us a single bus last year, but it did make some of the runs a little bit lighter and it did help some parents out. Their experience was very positive. But as far as addressing the overall crisis, it wasn't a significant assistance. And it was a huge program to manage. Dr. Reynolds had to invest a significant amount of time in managing that program.
When the board agreed to that, that was for a pilot program, a temporary program. So that was the time it gets exhausted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
I just want to say that I'm also getting feedback from parents that the rides are longer this year, that we said we were going to shorten the time on the buses. And you know how the parents love it? Call me and beat up on me. They're saying the rides are longer and the time has not been cut. And I can forward some of the names to the superintendent so she can, she can see why the feedback from the parents is a little bit different than what, what you're understanding.
And our average ride time is down. Our average run length is down significantly. But that doesn't mean any given student, they may have been at the beginning of the run last year and now they're at the end of the run. We do have some of our, particularly the 195 and 156, very long runs that go all the way from every corner of the city. So, but there's very few of those now. We've adjusted many of them down. But again, yes, send me them and we'll troubleshoot to see what we can solve.
I have one other, one other problem that I need to point out to you or mention. We are now, we are now putting the money on the students in FTA passes monthly. And I had children at Hutch Tech that were trying to get on the bus and the teacher was with them and the money wasn't on the passes. And the bus driver said he did not, they weren't going to let the children go to their CTE classes. And a parent called me and we talked to the bus driver and he let them on. But I did call the principal and I called Joe Agro. We do need to put the money on those passes. If it's going to be monthly, it's got to be timely because we're impacting students. And I don't, it's my school, Hutch Tech, that I got the call about. But I don't know how many other schools and students trying to go to CTE courses are impacted by not having the money on the passes. I don't think we did it that way before. But I really need you guys to be aware of that because, you know, when you get it back from one incident, you know, as an auditor, when we test, if it's happening in one place, it's happening in a few other or maybe even several other places. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I can't be beating bus drivers.
Thank you for sharing that because I haven't heard that that's an issue. So I appreciate you sharing that. If you can share the name also so that we can just peel back and see what happened there.
Oh, yeah, I have a teacher and the kids and, and I did talk to the principal. But I'll share, I'll share it with you. So if it's happening anywhere else, you know, I'm not selfish, just my school.
And just so everyone knows, Board Member Woods, the, the new chip system, it's a tap system now. So it was rolled out October 1st. So we are, we are doing a lot of back checking to make sure NFDA has their database right, so we don't have those incidents. Most of those cases, we've been able to fix pretty quickly.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate you helping out with that.
All right, well, Chief Hills, I want to thank you for your presentation. I am going to let Dr. Williams close it out.
That was a very in-depth presentation. I hope that it provided the board with a very comprehensive overview that, yes, we do have a lot of work to do with our facility. You know, it didn't happen overnight. Again, you know, these are longstanding issues, but we are building by building, addressing. The first step was, you know, just knowing what the issues were, how much they would cost. And, you know, David and his team has worked really hard in a very short period of time to help us to get that. So that's what he presented to you tonight. I think we're at a perfect time for looking at rebranding and kind of reinvigorating some of our programs. You know, if the programs are not attracting the students, then we got to look at them. If the buildings are underutilized, then we've got to look at all of that. And it just happens to be the time where we're getting ready to face some budgetary issues. So it's a good time for us to sit down now and start peeling layers and seeing, you know, where do we need to condense? Where do we need to modify? What can we grow? So thank you, Chief Hills, and thank you, Board. And I hope that this was able to answer some of the questions that you may have had regarding our facilities and enrollment and programs.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Wait a minute, Terry. Terry, is South Park playing at High Markville?
No, they're not. They lost last week, but good luck to Bennett. It's great.
Okay, all right, I didn't know.
In your text, if you can take a look at it, there's an opportunity. If anyone wants to, you know, sit in the suite on Friday evening, I believe Bennett will be playing Lancaster at 7:30. And so just text and let me know because I need to provide names.
Okay, great.
I put my request in.
All right. Everyone have a blessed night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
We have the Buffalo Urban League dinner.